Welcome everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order, please stand with us, we'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. After that, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, and that will be led by Alderman-at-Large George Payne.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the ability to come here tonight, Lord. Once again, we ask you for your wisdom and knowledge that you freely give, Lord. Lord, we pray that you would be with our country as we go through another midterm election, Lord. Jesus, Lord, your word says that you own the cattle on a thousand hills and that you're in control of the kings and queens of this nation, Lord. And I just pray that you would give us a moral leadership, Lord, in your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the October 4, 2022 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the South Haven Police Department Software Agreement with Recore Systems Incorporated. Mr. Nick Manley, City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, this agreement with Recore Systems Incorporated is the software that is needed to provide or help with the LPRs within the city. The software is actually ancillary to the service, so it's not required for the two quotes under thirty-one seven thirteen. So, and the amount of the contract is for thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, so need authorization for Chief Moore or his desk. Doug's in need to sign the contract tonight.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the ground lease, an easement with C Spire.
Yeah, this is a ground lease with C Spire. Recently, they, C Spire canceled the communication antenna lease on the Airways Tower. However, as part of the, their system, providing service within the city, they needed to maintain a small area as for their infrastructure. That's the, that's one of their boxes they use for the communications equipment. And so, they've offered, or they originally wanted just to provide a, give an easement for twenty-five hundred dollars. I suggested that they would need to at least do a lease and pay that per year. For since this, you know, their lease, they're not, I didn't want to get, I didn't think the city should do perpetual easement. So, tonight, this will be, approval was needed, a ground lease, and as part of that ground lease, it'll also include the easement for the equipment that's already there, but they'll also be paying us twenty-five hundred dollars per year for that piece of property along with providing the services still in that area. And it's about three hundred and fifty square feet for the ground lease.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
We have a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an engagement letter with Lewis and Ellis for professional actuary services.
Yes, since the city started providing the option for retirees or for health insurance for retirees that the retirees pay for, that has to be, not audited, but there needs to be an actuary service or valuation service provided by these, by the actuaries for, to be in accordance with GASP seventy-five. And so, tonight, bringing this engagement letter to you, it's been recommended by E.D. McElwain for approval with Lewis and Ellis to provide the actuary services for those retirees' insurance. And it's an engagement letter for two years for the total cost of nine thousand dollars for professional service as required by GASP seventy-five.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of a new municipal questionnaire.
Yeah, it's part of our end of the year audits, this questionnaire is required to be turned in to the state. And it's been completed and reviewed, and tonight, need approval from the board for the questionnaire that notes that we're in compliance with our audit and our audit procedures throughout the year, along with the municipal guidelines that's set forth in Mississippi Code. It's the same questionnaire we've done the last couple of years, and it's been completed and reviewed for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for the South Haven Police Department, Police Department sole source purchase.
Yeah, this sole source purchase is for the Axon body cameras, as you recall, we previously sole sourced this purchase last year or maybe a year and a half ago. Since we've added, we've added new officers, so we need to purchase additional camp body cameras. Sole source is still with Axon as approved prior, prior to tonight, but also, this will also reapprove that sole source and allow for this purchase of these cameras through Axon on a sole source basis that's set forth in the resolution and the amendment, or in the documentation provided by Axon.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is authority to advertise for depository bids.
The depository bid with Bank Corp, or Cadence Bank, I think is what the name of it, the bank is now, expires in January. Pursuant to our previous bid and the previous law, which required us to only have bids for two years, we need to go to bid on this again. So, we will go to bid in November with the bids being opened in December. However, it'll be on a four-year basis this time, based on the recently, recent change in the law to allow for a four-year term for your depository institution as opposed to a two-year term. So, tonight, the only thing that's needed is authorization to go to bid for the depository institution with the, but they'll, we'll bring it back, the bids back to you, and it'll be for a four-year term as opposed to a two-year term. So, you don't have to constantly every two years, A, rebid it, and B, if there's a higher interest rate, go with the, switch banks within the city because that takes quite a bit of time and manpower. So, tonight, just authorization to go to bid, and we'll bring those bids back to you on a four-year basis.
Mayor, I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the award of the bid for the Snowden Grove Park Roofing Project.
Yeah, this was previously went to bid, has approved by the city, and the bids were received. The lowest and best bid as recommended by Wes Brown, the Director of Parks, is with J-Con Development Corporation in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And this will be for the main concession structures and the alternate bid complex, or alternate bid complex D in the dugout. So, it includes the base bid with the alternate for those two other items as well. So, tonight, need approval for the accepting of the low bid, the lowest and best bid, and authorization for the mayor and or his desk to need to sign any and all documents for this project.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for a budget amendment.
Yeah, this is the final budget amendment for the FY twenty-two budget cycle. It just will basically finalizes and balances the FY twenty-two budget as, for the previous year and will be advertised pursuant to the Mississippi Code. So, tonight, need authorization for the final budget amendment, finalizing and balancing the FY twenty-two budget.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Cook.
I guess, sir, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and this will be the overlay zoning for approximately four hundred and eighty-eight acres of property located in the vicinity of the hospital, as well as south of Goodman Road, on the east side of Airways Boulevard. According to the map you see highlighted there in green, if you'll recall, we've had several meetings regarding this. One was to amend the comprehensive plan where we allowed medical marijuana to be incorporated into our twenty-year plan. We also went and adopted a new zoning district called CM, which is Commercial Medical, in our zoning ordinance at a previous meeting, and identified the boundaries where the intention, the intention was to rezon the property. So, what you have in front of you tonight are every individual parcel within those boundaries. My office did send a certified letter to every single one of the property owners informing them of what was happening, what the proposal was, and an option to remove their property if they so desired to, or to leave it in. Planning Commission heard it last month. We did have a representative from Baptist Desoto who was there just to listen, not for or against. He had a discussion with us, and he left, you know, without saying anything and, you know, in denial or approval of it. We had another gentleman who was a property owner in the area, he did not wish to take his out, he just wanted to see what the discussion was about. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of rezoning this property and handing it off to the Board of Aldermen in a unanimous vote in favor of it. One of the main discussions that I just want to make clear here is it is an overlay district, and that was the biggest question we were having from the property owners, is that your existing zoning stands. So, whatever you're zoning presently, be it office, commercial, planned business park, PUD, that stands in every use and every bulk regulation stands. What this does is provide the overlay district on top of that to specifically allow for the dispensary use, the testing facilities, and the research facilities. So, again, they voted unanimously in favor of it, and I'm just here if you have any questions.
Have we got any interesting people wanting to put anything in over there yet?
Uh, yes, quite a bit.
And what we'll do this evening, and since it is a zoning change, we'll have a hearing, so we'll open up the floor for anyone that wants to speak about it. But until, but for now, if there's any direct questions for Whitney, before we do that, let's take, let's take, you know, this time now for that.
How do you feel about it, Whitney?
I mean, there's pros and cons to it. I like the idea of starting out in a smaller area to essentially see what it entails. We've seen an influx, not so much of the dispensaries and the end users, but we have seen an influx of medical offices, doctors and nurses who cater to issuing the cards. So, I think keeping it on a smaller scale here is a much better idea than trying to just go full force with it and a full opt-in as some of the cities have done. And again, I mean, I think there's some great breakthrough things with medicine that work. I think there's also people who abuse it, but, I mean, we can't, we don't know until we start. We've done everything from my office and through procedurally that we can to make it as formally legal as we can from our zoning standpoint. So, I think this is a good step.
Whitney, the inquiries you've had for the dispensaries, how, with the properties that are here, how are they positioning out with these fifteen-hundred-foot buffer zones?
Uh, we have been in very in-depth talks with the different ones, because, you know, one thing we don't want to do is have somebody go contractually into an agreement with a lease or a property purchase, knowing that they're not going to fit that profile. So, we have been very quick to kind of show them where ones are already looking at, who's already bought, who's in lease agreements here and there, and so far, we have about four that are going to fit nicely into the locations if it's all rezoned. Two of them are purchase and build-to-suit, and two are leased tenant spaces. None of which I can say are on the hospital side, which was a little surprising, I thought they would kind of go that way, but no. All speculative, and until we opt in, we've made it very clear to everybody that even through this rezoning process here, we still have to formally opt in, and until that happens, my office is not issuing any zoning verification letters. We're not allowing them to move forward through us until that happens.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we approve item number one on the planning agenda.
We gotta have the hearing first, but I'll, I'll keep that motion, you're making the motion, I appreciate that. Is, if there's no other questions for Whitney right now, any other questions for Whitney before we open the floor? Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. The public hearing is now open. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this, this specific rezoning, please come forward and state your name. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in the public zoning hearing regarding the, the overlay and the medical commercial zone? Okay, hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move. Second.
You got a motion, Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Now, we have a motion by Alderman Jerome to approve the zone, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Payne, any other discussion?
Just a minute, we'll note that this is not an opt-in, it's just, just the zoning from a commercial.
It's approving the zone.
Approve the overlay zone.
Yeah. And as Whitney and I have discussed this in detail, for some reason, maybe because of the strange way this all came about in the state of Mississippi, there's a lot of people that have not understood that. Whitney's had to explain to a lot of people, as she stated, that this, that what we're doing tonight is not an opt-in. What we, what this board decided to do was to opt out as far as dispensaries and research facilities and testing until, until we created the zone. So, that's what we're doing tonight, but that still is not a two-in-one action tonight. All we're doing tonight is we're establishing the zone, and then, at a different time is when this board will make a decision to, to opt in if they choose to do that. But Whitney, if you will, please continue to make sure, since this has been cloudy around the state of Mississippi, please make sure to reiterate that with everyone, that what happens tonight has not opted in by the city. That's something that this board will make a decision in the future as we stated.
Yeah, we've made it very clear, and, and a lot of the questions have been weeded out, a lot of the, you know, guys to get in here really quickly and try to snag a spot, they've been weeded out. You have four or five that are legitimate in here trying to do what's right or familiar with the process, and they're, you know, we've been in discussions with them heavily, they know the process, we've kept it in emails, so they clearly understand that, but we'll continue.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries, thank you. Now, next on the agenda, we have Alex Whittington that has reserved a place to speak. Alex, please come forward.
Hello, Mayor Mr. White. Alderman Wheeler and the board, thank you for having me. I'm Alex Whittington, I'm a seventh grader at Desoto Central Middle School. Last October, I was riding my bike home from school and was struck by a car. I hit the windshield and thrown into the ditch. I was wearing a helmet which probably saved my life. Other drivers and neighbors stopped and helped me. They called an ambulance and stayed with me until the ambulance arrived. Over the past year, I've noticed more sidewalks and bike paths around South Haven, especially around my school, Snowden Grove Park and Silo Square. Thank you, I would love to see more sidewalks and bike lanes around South Haven, thank you for your time and attention.
Yes, sir. Well, hey, thank you for coming forward, and, and you say it better than I can say it or anybody up here, but that's why we do what we do, to make our city more pedestrian safe, and I'm so glad that you're okay, that you were able to withstand that. And, man, you're a tough dude, you know, hit the windshield and bounced off and popped back up and look at you today, you're, you're good and strong, and you're sending, you're doing something good, sending a message, you know, to the leadership of the city and all the citizens to explain how important it is to have pedestrian paths that are designated and separate from vehicular traffic. So, we really appreciate you coming forward and really appreciate your message tonight. Let's give Alex a hand. And you have, you have way more guts than I did when I was in the seventh grade. Thank you so much. And Alex would like to know, and everyone would like to know, that the area where Alex was involved in the accident is just a, it's a strange area. It's Nail Road right before you get to Bell Point subdivision, and if you can't visualize where that is, across on the south entrance of Snowden Grove Park at Nail right there, when you go east towards Olive Branch, there's a section of the road, it's, it's wide enough for four or five lanes until you get to a small section, and then it goes into a little neck right there, and it's, it's probably a hundred and fifty feet neck where there's, where the road narrows and there's not enough room to have a bike path or any kind of pedestrian trail. And so, it's my understanding, I think that's, isn't that where it happened, Alex? Yes, sir. And so, that area, we're working on trying to widen it. Like, we looked at, like, putting a multi-use trail, kind of like what we've done at Snowden and some other places. But you don't want to confuse drivers having part of it a multi-use trail and part of it a bike lane. And this is, our city engineer, Dan Cordell, informed me about this. So, it looks like the most cost-effective way to do it is that little section where it necks, we're going to try to just widen the road right there and then put a consistent bike and pedestrian trail along Nail. That way, it'll connect Bell Point to Snowden Park and all the other trails that go through Snowden. One of the reasons we haven't done that until Alex's accident is because when the trail go, we try to build the trails where they have connectivity all over the city, so, you know, it goes somewhere. This one really will pretty much dead-end into Bell Point, so that's why it hasn't been a priority. But, you know, what happened to him, it's, it's a, just a small area that we can fix to make it safer. So, anyway, Alex, just wanted you to know that we're going to do that, okay? All right, well, that's all that we have there, nobody else has signed up. Next, that goes to the next thing on the agenda, which is mayor's report, just a few things to update everyone about. Last meeting updated you on streets, y'all know the street resurfacing plan that we have is very aggressive. The most optimal weather for paving streets is in September and October. So, we, we'd like to get our contractors started, and the update tonight is that they have made tremendous progress. They patched about sixty percent of the streets on our entire list, so that's a great head start. We've never had that head start in the fall, as long as I've worked for the city, and so, I'm encouraged by that. And then, the report is that they're now in a position where they can start paving. They expect to start paving this week, but they have to get a head start on patching because it's more time-consuming than the paving, so they're making great progress right there. Um, y'all know we've talked extensively about, uh, possible rental property ordinance. You know, we have a nuisance property ordinance. We, uh, have been seriously concerned in studying this, like many cities in our country, uh, with the abundance of rental properties. Um, we've talked heavily about that. We've not, um, adopted a rental property ordinance, but the last time we discussed it, uh, I left you with the, uh, the plan that we would create a property database. And when we get the database, that way we know who lives where, we can track the number of crimes and code enforcement violations at every property. It's going to take us a little bit of time to build that, um, but we believe when we have that in place, it's a, one location where our code enforcement officers, our police data that floods into it, um, our building inspectors, uh, all these people can go to the same place and use this program. And the report tonight is, we are working on that. Uh, we've met with the software companies, and they're trying to take extra time to tailor that, uh, to fit South Haven's needs, to make it as user-friendly as possible for all of us to go to that same spot and get that data. Uh, it's going to take us a little bit of time. They've, they've estimated it could take as long as another, uh, ten to twelve months to have that complete. Um, but today, we talked about it in our department head meeting, that we are going to press them, uh, to get that done quicker because we think it's so valuable. But the update is we are making, uh, progress with the property database.
Agreed.
On Friday, November the eleventh, we will again have our Veterans Day luncheon again. Y'all may remember that it seems like an eternity. It's only been two years, but when COVID hit in two thousand and twenty, you know, the, the last thing in the world we want to do is, uh, put some of our, you know, our older veterans at risk. And so, uh, along with Christie Faulkner, who, uh, runs the Veterans Day luncheon, coordinates everything, we made the decision in twenty that was best just to cancel that. Uh, then again, when we started to start planning that again in twenty-one, uh, there were still some scares, still some unknowns out there, so we played it safe and we canceled it in two thousand and twenty-one as well. Uh, so the report tonight, and the good news is we are going to bring our Veterans Day luncheon back. And so on November the eleventh, uh, at eleven AM at the community safe room, uh, we'll go back to having our, having our luncheon again and, uh, get to, get to honor our veterans again. So that's a big deal. Everybody, uh, make plans to do that. It's, um, it's free for everybody, not just veterans, uh, but the only thing we ask is that you make reservations so we can have, you know, the tables set up and have adequate, uh, have, have adequate seating and food for everyone in attendance. And I think that's all that I have. That's all. Any questions for me among the board? Hearing none, let's move on. Next on the agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket that's presented on the stage. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Mr. Nick Manley again.
Couple items tonight, uh, mayor and board. Uh, first, need authorization for the Utilities Department and Clerk's Office to go to bid for the water chemicals. This just came up this afternoon, so authorization for them to bid water chemicals, um, as required by thirty-one, seven thirteen.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
No motion carries.
Uh, next item is needs to appoint Edie McElane as the COVID, um, or as representative for FEMA, MEMA, uh, for COVID-related programs as required by federal law. We need to have an appointee, um, and Edie will be that appointee, so I have a resolution drafted up. Um, but, uh, tonight need authorization for her to be the appointee as approved by the board.
So I'll move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Uh, next item that came up, uh, yesterday afternoon was, uh, the, a contract with Comcast for fire, uh, South Haven Fire Station number five. Um, this will allow for them to run the, uh, internet to the, um, station along with providing internet services there, and authorization from Michael Norris to sign that contract. It's been tailored for governmental entities the contract has, so, um, if approved, uh, Michael Norris can sign, so Comcast can get started on that, uh, in the near future.
So I'll move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And last item I have is, uh, tomorrow, the South Haven Police Department is hosting the, uh, the Chiefs Association Lunch and Training. So under, uh, the authority under Mississippi Code seventeen dash three-one, they can provide all food and, um, refreshments for that meeting, uh, pursuant to that statute, so need authorization for them to do that tonight.
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is our Utilities Billing Leak Adjustment Docket.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the Utility Bill Leak Adjustment Docket as presented on the stage. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda are two claims dockets.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Claims Docket number one in the amount of five million, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents, including demand checks. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion on docket one? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there a motion for docket two?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve docket number two in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and two dollars and thirty-four cents. Second.
On docket two, we have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
No motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
So I'll move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. The need this evening is personnel in the South Haven Police Department and Utilities Departments, economic development within the city, and interdepartmental personnel discussions with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?